Good evening and welcome to the February 4th Board of Selectmen's meeting. All the members are present. Tonight's meeting is for the budget presentation by Town Manager Jeff Howell for fiscal year 2020. Would you all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we have no Treasury warrants or minutes to approve tonight. Our first appointment on the agenda is Jeffrey Howell, Town Manager, for the presentation of the town's budget.
Thank you Chairman Kyra. I think this day in particular, I'm sure, is hopefully folks will be able to stay awake for this meeting after last night's long evening, but the Patriots prevailed, so I guess that's what counts. First of all, let me acknowledge folks that I see in the audience here, members of the School Committee, Dr. Glenn Brand, Superintendent of Schools, Paul Ruggiero, Assistant Superintendent of Administration and Finance. I see some department heads as well, and there may be a Finance Committee member or two out there. Thank you for being here this evening. Per the Town Managers Act, I'm pleased to present the fiscal 2020 annual operating budget. In addition to the operating budget itself, there are supporting documents, particularly the documents referencing the town's personnel, as well as our vehicle book and our five-year capital improvements document. The budget is really broken down into four major categories, first being general government, followed by the Wilmington Public Schools, shared costs, which are essentially statutory charges, insurance and debt and interest. These are costs that cover both school and town, and then fourth category being the Shawshine Valley Technical School. For the fiscal 2020 budget, proposed budget, it is $119,742,842, which represents an increase of 4.45% over the current budget of $116,404,824. I would also like to note that for the fifth consecutive year, we are able to include transfers into various, what I call, savings accounts, in particular, the capital stabilization account, our retirement stabilization account, other post-employment benefits trust, and also making an advance payment on our retirement liability. Starting with the school, proposed school budget, I would note that the increase proposed here is 4%, and it largely represents costs associated with employees, collective bargaining obligations make up a large percentage of that, some minor adjustments in personnel, special education, and professional development. On the general government side, the increase here that you will see is a 6.62% increase, which in large measure represents our proposed personnel, police and fire personnel, as well as a case worker that will be shared between the elderly services and the Veterans' Office, and then overtime increases in our overtime budget specifically for police and fire. With respect to the Shawshine Tech, the initial number that was provided to us was an increase of $700,000. I received a call this afternoon from the Superintendent of Schools, Tim Broderick, who advised me that based upon some recent information he had received through the Governor's budget, the number is being reduced slightly to an increase of a little less than $580,000, which represents about a 13.5% increase, and that is reflective of a couple of things, first being the expected enrollment increase from Wilmington. Wilmington will be sending more students to the Shawshine Tech. There'll also be some adjustments in student population coming from some of the other schools. I would note particularly Bill Ricker with the new high school, the expectation is that the numbers may be down a bit there. One bright note I would point out is on the town's health insurance budget, which is currently $13 million. Some of you may recall that in the fiscal 19 budget, we were able to reduce the health insurance budget from about $13.6 million down to $13 million. This year, we are proposing to level fund the health insurance budget. Our claims have been favorable, and one of the things that we've done this past fiscal year is to make an adjustment in the Medicare supplement for retirees. We were able to change the plan to one that still provides reasonable and appropriate benefits, but it reduces the premium that the town pays as well as retirees. With respect to the town's local economy, I think we still are doing very well here in Wilmington. Clearly, it's evidenced by the number of homes that continue to be built around town, whether it's Murray Hill or the property over at the Green Meadows Drive. All these areas continue to see homes being built, and also, I think it's more than fair to say that this past calendar year, it's really been a seller's market in Wilmington with homes spending very little time on the market. As was noted earlier in a presentation by our Principal Assessor, Karen Rassus, home values continue to increase. In the most recent period of time, the increase has gone from $439,673 for an average home in Wilmington up to $481,922. Certainly with the work that was done by a number of people around this table with respect to analog devices, naming Wilmington as their corporate headquarters and proposing a $142.9 million expansion, I think that is indicative of Wilmington's economy. And I would also note that during November and December of calendar 18, the unemployment rate in Wilmington held at 2.2%, which was down from the prior year of 2.7%. With respect to the town's revenues, the three principal categories of revenue are property tax, local aid, and local receipts. These three categories combined represent just over 92% of the town's revenue. Property tax, including the debt exclusion that was passed a few years ago on the high school, bring in $86,402,504. Within the property tax, we also allow for new growth, which is a consequence of new construction. We have consistently been conservative with that projection, and again, this year continue to project $1.1 million in new growth. The 10-year average has been roughly $1.37 million. Local aid, we anticipate local aid coming in at $14,457,157. This is largely made up of Chapter 70, which is the education aid. Some of you may recall when the Governor released his budget a couple of weeks ago, one of the categories he referenced was increasing aid to communities by roughly $20 per student. We're actually estimating that number to be about $25 per student when all is said and done. Obviously, the process from the Governor, both House and Senate, will deliberate and ultimately come up with a compromise package that the Governor will review and approve. Unrestricted general government aid, which is the other major category of local aid, we're anticipating this will go up a little less than $70,000 for fiscal '20. And then the third category under revenue is local receipts. These are everything from building permits to meals tax to the motor vehicle excise tax. We expect this to be relatively stable. We're estimating approximately $85,000 in increase in the motor vehicle excise and about $10,000 on the meals tax, bringing that up to about $400,000 for the year. So shifting into the goals, and this you'll see is just the breakdown of where the funding goes in terms of local expenditures. Clearly, a major priority for the town remains education of our students. There's no question that they are the future of the town. As parents, I think we can all agree that we want our kids to have a better situation than we did, have more opportunities, and be lifelong learners. And in that manner, I think it's fair to say the residents of Wilmington have been particularly generous and certainly supportive of education in this community, not only in terms of the operating budgets that have been passed over the years, but also with respect to the debt exclusions, namely, the debt exclusion that was passed in the late 90s for the middle school, which was built in 2000, and then more recently, the high school, which was built in 2015. The school budget is proposed at $41,939,603. As noted earlier, the increases are largely due to wage increases and special education and professional development costs. Based upon communications with Dr. Brand, I would note that clearly some of the priorities that he has for the district include continuing to direct resources to programs that support social and emotional challenges faced by the students throughout the district, maintaining and expanding technology infrastructure for teaching, learning, and support services, continuing to support their Reader's Workshop program at the elementary level, purchasing a new science program for the K-5 level, and continuing to use their Envisions math program at the middle school level. In addition to this operating budget, the schools are also requesting and I'm recommending that they receive $605,000 in capital funding for various projects, and I'll run through a brief list. $20,000 for Chromebooks at the middle school. This is part of a multi-year program to continue to keep the Chromebooks updated. These are a tool for the MCAS testing that is done every year. Upgrades to the Wi-Fi system in the middle school, $100,000. Projectors and whiteboards upgrades at the middle school, again, $180,000 proposed there. Continuing to upgrade the data center throughout the district for $100,000. Replacing laptops and desktops at the North and the West Intermediate Schools for $100,000. And then also, taking the first step in a two-year project to upgrade and replace the PA system throughout the schools, $30,000 is earmarked for that. And replacing desktops and monitors in labs at the middle school for $75,000. I certainly would like, at this point, to extend my thanks to both Dr. Brand and to Paul Ruggiero, the Assistant Superintendent of Admin and Finance, for their working relationship with us. As always, it's been a longstanding tradition now that the schools have worked very well and very closely with the town, and once again, that proves to be the case. I think this partnership continues. Second goal that we continue to pursue is to promote energy efficiency in our buildings and in our fleet. One of the things that we will be looking to do in the next month or so is to have a meeting to once again review the facilities plan. I think that's a key document that we need to look at because of some of the recommendations there. Certainly, there are building issues, whether they be windows or heating systems that we really need to look at before we decide on whether to invest in major amounts of money in our buildings. I think we need to be clear on which buildings we're looking to replace and the timeline for doing so. One of the projects that we are proposing this year is to replace the heating system at the library. The boiler there came with the building, which was built in 1969. We're looking to replace it with a dual system, which will be both oil-fired as well as gas. George Hooper, the Public Buildings Superintendent, has been in discussions with National Grid about the prospect of extending gas to the library. So with this dual system, when that does happen, we will be able to transfer over from oil to gas and certainly have a building that is heated appropriately and more efficiently. Also, we're looking to begin the first phase of a two-phase project for replacement of exterior and interior lighting at the West Intermediate School. This again is, we've done this in some of the other schools, but changing out some of the old incandescent lights for LED provides better lighting as well as more economical in terms of electricity. With respect to technology, which is another focus of ours, I would note that last year, you'll recall, we were requesting money for a new system to deal with our payroll and treasury and collection functions. It was the so-called MUNIS system. The town appropriated $941,800 for this transition from the current soft right program. That process began in earnest in July. A number of staff from the School Department, as well as the town, began the first step, which was really developing, reviewing our chart of accounts, which is really the fundamentals of any financial computer system. That work has been done, unfortunately, in the fall of 18. There were several people from my office who were key to that process that moved on to other positions, and so we've temporarily paused on that until we fill these positions. I expect that process will start up again here in the next few months. One of the things that we're proposing in this upcoming fiscal year is $175,000 to replace the fire station alert system and radio box fire alarm receivers at the dispatch at public safety. So similar to the alert systems or the security systems that some people have in their residence, a number of commercial businesses have systems where if there's a fire, the signal is transmitted to the public safety building. Public Safety is able to alert our fire personnel, and they are dispatched to the particular locations. The system that currently is in existence, again, came with the building, which was completed in 2001. We believe it's important to upgrade that system. Part of that system also controls the lighting in the bays where the fire vehicles are, opens and closes the bay doors, and has a lot of critical functions there. In addition, we are continuing the process of replacing computers amongst the town offices. We have roughly 175 computers, desktops, through the various town offices, and we're looking to replace 30 of those this year in addition to a few laptops. We're on a five-year cycle so that we're able to keep these updated and don't fall behind. We're also looking to replace 20 network switches. Again, those are throughout the town's infrastructure, and they allow information to be transmitted throughout our fiber network. So that cost is $15,000. The cost for the computers replacements is $43,000. Next, I'd like to talk about our multi-year capital improvement plan. We have a document that each of the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee members has. This runs from fiscal 2020 through 2024. It also includes information that came out of the facilities plan that was done in early 2018. And I would say that it's, I think it's important to have this upcoming conversation about how we want to use that facilities plan, because it really does, it was an attempt to identify projects that need to be addressed and attempt to establish a timeline. Certainly, these timelines aren't cast in stone, but I think it's important for us to really take a serious look at what buildings need to be replaced or significantly upgraded. Just by note, I think it's, certainly the town has been masterful at reusing its buildings. The Daniel Bazell School was built in 1935, served as a school for many years before being converted to the senior center in the 1980s. The Roman House was constructed in 1900, was part of a much larger estate, has served as the town's school admin building for many years. Certainly, we know some of the things about that building in terms of its lack of access and other challenges. The Glen Road School was built in 1958, was shuttered in the early 80s, and then reopened in the mid 80s as the temporary town hall. The Public Buildings Office is the former fire station and was built in 1954. The Boutwell and the Wildwood Early Childhood Centers were constructed in 1955 and 1961, respectively, and the Woburn Street School was constructed in 1963 and the Shawshine in 1970. So clearly, these buildings have done well by the town, but I think we really need to take a serious look at replacing and seriously upgrading these facilities going forward. This capital budget for fiscal 2020 is a little over $5 million worth of expenditures coming from various sources, including Chapter 90, free cash, as well as the tax levy. We're proposing $250,000 to replace five police cruisers, which we have done regularly now for a number of years. $180,000 to replace a 19-year-old bucket truck with a new truck with a 75-foot extension arm. $80,000 for two 3/4-ton pickup trucks for the DPW. $72,000 to replace a 2003 heavy-duty dump truck that is inoperable currently. $566,000 will allow us to remove the underground storage tanks that we have at the DPW for diesel and gas and replace them with above-ground tanks. I would tell you that we have no indication that the tanks are failing at this point, but it's better to be ahead of the curve in my estimation. These tanks were installed in 1986, and I think it's appropriate that we look to bring them above ground. We're proposing $84,000 to continue the phased work that's been going on now to connect the Glen Road to Middlesex Ave via Lawrence Street and Shady Lane. This is a sidewalk project, as you know, for many of you that go that way, that has been going on for a few years now, so $84,000 will continue the sidewalks. $100,000 proposing part of it to be funded through Chapter 90, part of it through the tax levy, to replace 2,300 linear feet of bituminous curbing with granite curbing along Middlesex Avenue from Federal Street to First Avenue. And then $155,000, which would be the first year of a two-year process to repave the Woburn Street School. So you'll recall, we've been doing this now with the schools. Shawshine has been done to this point, and the North has been done, so this is an ongoing effort to repave parking lots in our schools. And then we're proposing $856,000. This is a grant, no-interest loan from the MWRA to address our infiltration and inflow issues within the sewer system. The loan would be a 10-year loan, roughly $10,700 per year. The balance of the capital can be found on pages 73 and 74 of the budget book. I would now like to talk about another goal of ours, which is to develop policies and plans to improve our financial capabilities. The Board will recall that in 2017, we received two grants, community compact grants from the state, and the intent was to assess our financial capabilities, one way in terms of the actual financial management, secondly, to look at the policies, the financial policies that we have, and then finally, to look at the forecasting that we do in terms of revenue and expenditure projections. We had representatives from the Edward Collins Center for Public Management at UMass Boston come out and do the review and work with us. On November 13th, at a meeting with the Board of Selectmen, recommendation was made to change the Town Accountant's position to a Finance Director with oversight of accounting, treasury collections, and assessing. We believe that this will improve the operations and reinforce a joint direction for the financial offices. I'd like to thank the Board of Selectmen for their support of this recommendation. Plans are now in motion to bring this to fruition. We currently have an advertisement out for the Assistant Finance Director position, and we'll be advertising shortly the position of Finance Director. As many of you know, the current Town Accountant, Mike Morris, will be retiring in July, and his assistant, Lorraine Herman, will be retiring in March. As previously noted, the budget continues to plan for the future in terms of setting money aside. Once again, we will be proposing $4 million be transferred into the capital stabilization account, which would bring that total up to $14 million. I would note, that certainly seems like a lot of money, and it is a lot of money, but when you look at the capital, the facilities plan that was done to address the various issues that were identified in that plan, the cost is $143 million. So, you know, there's some serious obligations that we have going forward. I'm also recommending $500,000 be transferred to our retirement stabilization account. The purpose of this account is really to serve as a buffer when our retirement assessment goes up substantially. Every community within the Middlesex Retirement System is assessed an amount each year to pay for the cost of the employee retirement benefits. Middlesex is on track to retire their pension liability, or I should say, our pension liability, by 2035. Wilmington's pension liability right now is roughly $83 million, and so in order to do that, we, every year, pay this assessment. My expectation is that this assessment is going to go up significantly from one year to the next. In fact, this year, it's gone up by $545,000. Fortunately, given our circumstances this year, we're able to deal with that without going to this reserve account, if you will, but by having this savings account in terms of this pension fund, during those years where we are not able to absorb an increase of that nature, we can draw upon this fund, so it serves as a safety valve of sorts. I'm also recommending that the town transfer $1 million towards an early payment on that pension liability. So similar to your mortgage payment, if you're making an early payment on that, you retire the debt early. My intent by, and again, this is now the third or fourth year that we've done this, by making these early payments, we will retire our pension liability debt earlier. And then finally, $1 million is being proposed for the OPEB Trust Fund. OPEB is largely liabilities associated with health insurance for retirees. Certainly, the rating agencies pay a lot of attention to this. There's differences of opinion as to how important an issue it is, but clearly, it has the attention of the folks that are rating our borrowing, so we need to be attentive to it as well. We have a policy that states that every year, we will set aside at least the amount of our meals tax revenue into this account. Our meals tax revenue right now is about $390,000, so clearly, we're well above and beyond that, and I think maintaining this kind of a contribution on an annual basis sends the right message to the investment community. With regard to personnel, this is again clearly where a lot of the town's increased in budget will be playing out. Anytime I'm asked to look at personnel increases, I always have a measure of reservation. Anytime I'm asked to look at personnel increases, I always have a measure of reservation. Clearly, these are ongoing costs once personnel are added, beyond the cost of salaries or the cost of benefits, and we just talked about OPEB a little bit. But I think it's certainly been made clear to me that we can't continue the same staffing levels, particularly on the police and fire, and even the social service category. Both on the police and fire side, in the case of the police, the last time positions were added were 2008, when there were two lieutenants added. On the fire side, it was 2009, when two, when a private was added. In each case, I'm recommending the addition of four privates on the, on the fire side and four patrol officers on the police side. On the, in the case of the fire, the number of runs have increased by 24.6% since calendar 2009. They went from 3,364 runs in 2009, in calendar 2018, 4,192. We currently operate two ambulances and need at least nine individuals per shift in order to cover for that. There are many instances where one run will occur, and then before officers return to quarters, a second run will go. And so, in order to maintain operation of those two ambulances, we have to, the baseline level is at least nine. Unfortunately, what we've found here for the last year-plus is that because of either work injuries, personal injuries, in some cases, military deployments, we've been down consistently anywhere from four to six people. And in order to maintain the level of service, we're having to replace on a one-to-one basis, which means overtime. And I know the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen have expressed concerns about the overtime, so one of the reasons for this request is to try to address the overtime. I will tell you that we aren't going to be able to solve this problem in one year, but I think it's a start. On the police side, similar situation in that the level of activity has increased. We also have had issues, whether they be retirements or people being out on extended leave for one reason or another. Also, with the, the police, the, the nature of the calls that they are dealing with has changed over the years. I think it's fair to say that, well, many of the calls may be, you know, the calls associated with a speeding ticket or some of the basic types of cases that you would equate to police work. There's clearly a lot more complicated instances. We're dealing a lot now with social-emotional issues. You know, we talked about it in the schools, but it clearly seems to be an issue society-wide, substance abuse, mental health issues interacting, and the police are dealing with a much more complicated set of circumstances. Often, these, these calls require more time than they did in the past, and so the personnel are being stretched thin. In my discussions with the police chief, we've talked about the prospect of adding a, a fourth sector. Right now, we have three sectors in town with a, one patrol officer essentially responsible for that sector unless they're called away to another emergency. Given the level of activity, we think it's appropriate to add a fourth sector, and so this, the four personnel would begin the process of addressing that. With regard to our social service agencies, primarily veterans and elderly services, Lou Semaglia and Teri Marciallo have expressed concerns about their ability to continue to provide timely attention and follow-up to the residents they serve. And many of the people that they serve are really one and the same. They are elderly veterans or spouses of veterans. The Veterans Services Office is handling over 400 cases currently that involve a variety of benefits, everything from Chapter 115 benefits, which are state assistance, to assistance from the Veterans Administration, ranging from disability payments, medical coverage, fuel assistance, food assistance, a variety of types of assistance. Also, the number of World War II Korean and Vietnam veterans is continuing to grow older, which is resulting in more claims for assistance, and, and Lou's office is also seeing the newer generation of veterans, Gulf War veterans, veterans from Afghanistan, who bring some of the same issues, but also a myriad of other issues that have not had to be dealt with in the past. And I would say that one of the, it's kind of a two-edged sword, because certainly, the Veterans Office here in Wilmington is highly regarded, both in Wilmington and outside of Wilmington, and that in and of itself, I think, attracts more people to the office. Similarly, I would say the same is with the Elderly Services Office, which is under the auspice of Teri Marciallo. She has noted that the senior population, which is defined as over 60, which is a little scary, because I'm getting there, has increased in Wilmington from 2015 to 2018 by 27.9%, going from 4,045 seniors to 5,176, and then 6,000 projected by 2020. This trend will continue in Wilmington, as it will across the state. Many of these individuals are going to seek the services of elderly services. During the same period of time, between 2015 and 2018, the number of case management services request, increased by 15%. The number of requests for fuel assistance increased 33%. So clearly, there's a level of activity here that warrants attention. And so, for that reason, I'm recommending that we hire a full-time case manager to be, a caseworker, rather, to be divided up between those two offices at a salary of $43,898. Some of the work that I would anticipate this individual will be involved in is engaging with, in follow-up with residents after initial contact by either Lou, Mike, Teri, or Laura, staying in touch to make sure that these citizens are getting, following up on their medical appointments, getting their scripts filled, and issues any additional services that they may need, following up on documentation that, assisting these individuals with documentation if they're looking to receive benefits either through veterans or social services, being able to complete the documents and get them off to the appropriate state agencies, whether it's for fuel assistance or medical coverage, and then working with the offices to make sure that the case files are kept up to date. Switching gears, I'd like to talk a little bit about community development. On the housing front, we continue to seek to engage developers about the prospect of including affordable housing as a component of their projects. It's been well-established, I think, that there are a number of residents in Wilmington that are looking for alternatives to the single-family $800,000 home that seems to be the home that's being constructed nowadays, and so it really is important that we begin to look at ways of diversifying, diversifying the housing stock. We have other people who have perhaps grown up in town, left to go off to school or go off for other jobs, want to come back to town and are, are stymied because of the price. And then we have other folks who may have, through word of mouth or otherwise, heard about Wilmington as a desirable place to live, want to come in and simply can't afford to. I think one of the things that we should continue to keep on the table is the prospect of using town land to provide or convey to developers to use for affordable housing. I would note that there are a number of our neighbors that are either considering this or have already done it. North Reading, Tewksbury, Bilrika, Bedford, Concord, Dunstable, Sharon, Marshfield, and Wellesley are all communities that have either, have it as an option that they are looking at, or in some cases, have actually sold town property to generate affordable housing. The town will propose an inclusionary housing bylaw, which is intended to keep pace, to some measure, with, between affordable and market-rate homes that are coming on the market. I would say, however, that this inclusionary bylaw is not going to solve the problem. For many years, we have had a market-rate housing that has come on the market without any affordable units, and in some cases, because of the nature of the way affordable units were structured years ago, after 15 years or so, they came off the affordable listing, so in fact, we've lost affordable units. So this is clearly an issue that will be a focal point going forward. The Economic Development Committee, which will be finalized shortly in terms of membership, I would expect to serve as a catalyst in determining what residents are seeking in terms of economic development and what economic development means to people. I, I think if you talk to different people, it means different things. I think it will also serve as a, as a point to bring in different views, whether we bring in people from the various schools, colleges, and universities that look at economic development, certainly, both people in Wilmington, as well as potential commercial developers who look at Wilmington and the greater region to identify what some of our strengths are and perhaps what some of the barriers are to setting up business in Wilmington would be. The Route 38 corridor study, that was just recently completed, and I would anticipate the Economic Development Committee will look at this and identify next steps as to how we can make the Route 38 corridor a more viable place for commercial and retail businesses. That will be an ongoing effort. And one of the other areas I anticipate requiring more attention is clearly the issue of unaccepted streets. Residents, I can understand clearly, residents who live on unaccepted ways are frustrated by the fact that the town does not maintain their streets. The unfortunate reality is that the town does not own those streets. It would be the equivalent of the town coming in and doing work on someone's yard. These unaccepted ways, people have rights to the street themselves, they're, they're private property essentially, and that, for that reason, the town is restricted in terms of what we can do with upgrades to those streets. There's clearly a strong desire to accept these unaccepted ways, and, and some of them, we may be able to do with minor modification. But I would just note, in terms of the issues that the town needs to be mindful of, are the costs and implications for accepting these unaccepted ways. Just by way of example, the Cunningham Street, which I'm sure everyone is familiar with, it's about four-tenths of a mile long, there were a number of issues there, which in that road is an accepted way, with water ponding up on the street. Public Works, over the course of about 10 years, was able to make modifications to drainage, establish some retention basins, basins to get the water off the road. It was a cost of about $170,000, and that didn't involve full-depth reconstruction of the road. So, that was just four-tenths of a mile of one accepted way. So when we talk about the prospect of taking on unaccepted ways, in many cases, these streets have not been engineered to current standards. They don't have proper drainage, if they have drainage at all. And once we take them on, as is, so to speak, the town owns them, the town is responsible and liable for, for those streets. So I think it is an issue that we're going to need to deal with, but I think we need to be measured in terms of how we pursue that. In conclusion, as evidenced by the ongoing construction of new homes and strong housing sales over the past year, Wilmington remains a highly desirable place to live and raise a family. The increase in housing and retail-commercial activity that Wilmington has experienced since the turn of the century creates opportunities and challenges. New residents have been welcomed and embraced into the community and local nonprofit organizations, like the Wilmington Community Fund and Where One Wilmington, have provided increased opportunities for civic engagement and extending support to those in need. The arrival of Osram Sylvania and the development of retail businesses along the Balladvale Street corridor and Analog Devices' commitment to establishing Wilmington as their corporate headquarters have created employment opportunities and shopping choices right here in Wilmington. This growth also challenges the town's ability to continue to provide the quality of services that residents and business expect. And the pressures and problems that are experienced in other communities in eastern Massachusetts and the greater region do not stop at our borders. Some of these pressures manifest themselves in calls for emergency services that may increase in frequency, be more complex, and require more time to resolve. An aging population and the interrelationship of mental health disease and substance abuse continues to impact the school system, the police and fire services, and the town's social service agencies. This budget recognizes those stresses on the system and seeks to direct additional resources to enable the town to meet those demands. The work of those who serve in local government is not easy. For every challenge that is overcome, there is another one to take its place. In the words of John Quincy Adams, quote, "Patience and perseverance have a magical effect, before which difficulties disappear and obstacles vanish," end quote. I fully believe that my colleagues, with whom I have the pleasure and the privilege to work with, will continue to exercise that patience and perseverance. I want to extend a sincere thank you to each town and school employee and volunteer, board and committee member, who endeavor each day to make your best effort to serve the town of Wilmington. This presentation of the town's annual budget and the capital improvement plan provide an opportunity to the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee and the community at large to assess where we are in terms of meeting our community needs. The recommended expenditures in this document set a course for addressing those needs. The Finance Committee will begin their review of this budget document tomorrow evening, and will continue that process for the balance of February into early March, with meetings on Tuesdays and Thursdays. I look forward to working with the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee to complete the review of this budget, which will be presented to the annual town meeting for their careful consideration on Saturday, May 4, 2019. Before I close, I wish to extend a real sincere thank you to a number of people, and some of them who may be in the audience here. Mike Morris, Town Accountant, and Lorraine Herman, the Assistant Town Accountant, have been just crucial to this whole process. It's hard to believe it's been over 30 years that we have been working together every year, certainly, many years under Mike Kyra's able leadership, putting these budgets together, and debt of gratitude on my behalf goes out to both of them. They'll certainly be retiring soon, and being a runner, I always used, like to use analogies in that respect. So for Mike and Lorraine, they're heading down Hereford Street, about to take the left onto Boyleston, and the finish line is in sight for them, but I, I really extend my sincere thank you to them for all of their time and effort. We've spent a lot of long nights, Saturdays, putting all of this together, and it's been greatly appreciated. Also, I'd like to thank the newest addition to my team, and that's Carrie Colburn Dion. She only started on January 7th, so was, you know, we were well into the budget process at that point, but she jumped in with both feet, and again, nights, weekends, she's done what it's taken, and, you know, I, I have tremendous confidence in, in her, and it's just been a, just tremendous relief to have somebody in the, in the cockpit with me. Also, want to thank John O'Neill, our IT person, who helped in putting this presentation together, the PowerPoint presentation. You know, there are certain folks that I call my Mr. Fix-It or Mrs. Fix-It, and he's one of those go-to folks that I can always count on when there's an issue. And then, I, I can't fail to recognize two people in my office that have been critical during the last several months. We lost three people in October. You know, and I say lost, it was certainly our loss. They went on to positions that they were they went on to positions that they were pursuing, and, you know, I give them, wish them all the best, but it was difficult to lose three people all in a short timeframe. But in spite of that, Beverly Dalton, the Administrative Assistant, stepped up and within, you know, almost instantaneously became a, our go-to person in terms of payroll between Beverly and Lorraine Herman. Not something that Beverly had ever trained for, or probably aspired to, but in the, in the moment, she jumped in and, and has been doing that now since, I guess, November. And certainly, with everything else that's going on, it's not easy. We have a weekly payroll on the town side, bi-weekly on the school, but it requires great attention to detail. And then Wendy Martinello is also another go-to person for me. Because of the staff situation, she's really had to step it up and has deals with all of our hiring process and any number of other issues that come about, so that, for the two of them, I just say thank you very much, I couldn't do it without you, and help is coming. And with that, as you see on the screen here, this is the list of dates with the Finance Committee, we're going to be meeting with them tomorrow night, first date out of the gate, to present the overview and talk about general government, and then go on from there, most Tuesdays and Thursdays through February. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to present this budget, and available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, for this presentation, and thank, thank you and your staff for putting together such a comprehensive and conservative approaching budget again this year, this being the first time that we're seeing it, so I'm sure that there'll be some questions in, in the future, once we start to dig into it and we, we attend the finance meetings as well. But once again, thank you for the presentation. Any members? Mr. Bendel?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. I want to thank the manager certainly for this presentation. I know that while many of us were preparing for last night's game, I know you were busy here this weekend, again, spending a lot of time over the weekend preparing for this, so thank you and to your staff, thank you to all the department heads, especially those who are here tonight. I want to thank you for your work, I certainly know that this is a challenge, and, and I look forward to reviewing it. Just a couple of quick initial thoughts, I want to commend you that I'm glad to see there are, there are investments again, and once, once again, in what I believe is the backbone of our community is our school system, and I want to thank my colleagues who are here from the School Committee and the Superintendent and his staff, so thank you very much. I'm glad to see that there will be another continued investment in a substance abuse coordinator position here in town, which I think is crucial. Investments in our public safety, which is also vital for the safety of our community, and also will help address the concerns that we have in the overtime budget, to help save folks money. I'm pleased to see that the creation of a position to help out our expanding and robust senior center, and certainly to help Lou and Mike and what they do at the Veterans Office. And so, in addition to technology and OPEB investments, I'm glad to see that. And then, lastly, I'm very excited to see that, I understand the challenges that they present, but I think chipping away at the concern that many residents have had in terms of accepting some roads at a time will go a long way. We, I think we all hear about folks who have challenges with their, their road not being accepted, and I think, chipping away at it little by little, we can't accept them all at once, I, I understand that, but I think it will go a long way with folks, so I really appreciate your work on this. I look forward to reviewing it and asking questions, and I, I wish the Finance Committee the best of luck as they continue to comb through this going forward. So thank you very much for your presentation tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the chairman notice, notice, notified us earlier relative to the budget, this is the first that we, as a member of the board, have an opportunity to see the budget, so obviously I'd like to reserve the right down the road to call the town manager or, or at a future meeting, bring up a question or ask questions. And I'm really glad to see that, once again, the town steps up to the plate, pumping in the money to the education, especially in the Special Ed Department, which is really dear to my heart, but all the kids are dear to my heart. And being on the board a long time, I really take pleasure in us doing that. And it's the first I've seen the Superintendent, I want to congratulate you on your position, we never met, and I'm sure you do a good job. And the second man in control, Mr. Rogério, during some difficult times took over that job, he did an outstanding job keeping everybody, he was the glue, keeping everything together, so I want to thank that gentleman too. Jeff, if I can ask a question, relative to free cash, how much do we have in free cash right now?
Right now, it's twenty-three point six million.
All right. And how much, because I noticed in the presentation, we're looking at, like, underfunding seven hundred and fifty-one thousand to, relative to free cash, how much of free cash are we going to be using relative to this budget?
We will be using about four million.
About four million. So just let me ask, and just asking relative to the free cash, I know it's not free cash. There was no way in the budget at, at all, anywhere, we could have used with the receipts that are coming in, relative to the guidelines for, for the Commonwealth at two and a half, we have no choice but to dip into the free cash. I noticed, you know, some of the investment we're making, I get that, is there anywhere else in the budget we could have used funds as opposed to free cash?
Well, they, I mean, essentially, we're transferring money from available funds, free cash, to other savings accounts, so, you know, we do have, so five hundred and sixty-six thousand for the underground storage tanks, that will be taken from free cash, I think it's certainly a sizable expenditure, I think it's an appropriate expenditure, but that's something that free cash is intended for. The other area is a hundred and eighty-five thousand for the boiler at the library, again, a more significant expenditure, which we can, I think it's reasonable to take from free cash. But by and large, what we've been doing now for several years is funneling some of that free cash into these various savings accounts that I talked about earlier. You know, one of the things that I've tried to ensure over the years is that we maintain a healthy free cash, and I know it's kind of a double-edged sword, because, you know, people look at that and say, why are we having such a sizable amount of money set aside? And I probably sound like a broken record, but as with anybody's personal savings account, you, you need to set aside money both for the large ticket items, whether it's the next building down the road, or, you know, the, the likely circumstance at some point here, where the economy starts to tail off, state aid isn't, you know, gets restricted, and then we have to rely on some of that available funds to sustain services.
No, I agree with you. I was on the board back in 2007, when the economy really dipped, and we were on budget, we did the best we could, we dipped into some free cash, but no pink slips went out, and I do agree, you know, even in our own personal life, you need some, you know, rainy day fund accounts. I'm really glad to see, relative, and I'll be almost done, Mr. Chairman, I'm glad to see in person now that we're putting four new police officers and four more firefighters to the budget. It's been over a decade since we asked, actually filled that position, those positions, and it's, you know, they're on the front line, as you said, you know, they're doing other than beyond, but has to be done with the job years and years ago, relative to mental illness, and I know the opioid is, is a big problem, the opioid, and I understand all that. And once again, I see, is Mike Morris here? I see Mike in the background, I noticed the manager talked about. I know back in the eighties, you were serving as the Town Accountant, I was here in the eighties as well, and the Assistant, and he talked about you folks retiring, you guys done a great job, you're going to be running down Boyleston. I won't be running with you, I'll probably take the tea with you, but I see where you're going, so I think you guys have done a great, great job there. I know I took a few minutes, but that needed to be said, and Mike Morris is an outstanding employee, and I'm sure he was nothing but an asset to this community all those years. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Reed?
Yeah. Couple comments, I, I do, I'm glad to see that we're continuing to prioritize saving for those future liabilities, a million and a half combined towards the retirement prepayment and the, the pension liability, also a million towards OPEB, and four million towards capital stabilization. I'm glad to see that the health insurance has leveled off, it's still, I mean, health insurance to the town is still thirteen million dollars, it's a huge portion of the budget, but it, I mean, I guess, I don't know if it's a silver lining, but it is at least leveled off. I'm glad to see that we're providing more assistance to Terry Marciallo and Lucy Maglia, and respectively, the seniors, senior center and the Veteran Services Department, because in the social worker, I, the, to echo comments of my colleagues regarding the increases in staffing to police and fire, since 2009, the number of runs for the fire department has increased to twenty-four point six percent, the ambulance runs have increased forty-six point six percent for police, the complaints and requests for service during that period have increased sixteen point eight percent. Mr. Hall, and I know Chief Begonis is here, the nature of a lot of those calls for the police department especially has changed, and they're very, they're more time-consuming than they were in the past, so I think the increase in staffing for police, fire, and also that shared position for the seniors, the senior service, sorry, the elderly services department and the Veteran Services Department, I think one of the most important roles of government is to help ensure the safety and welfare of the citizens that it serves, and I think those things are a great step towards accomplishing as best that this government can, the safety, welfare of, of our residents here. I will note, nobody likes paying taxes, it's not exactly anything new, but our tax rate is very similar to Bill Ricker, and it's better, or significantly better than Redding, North Reading, Tewksbury, Andover, and Chelmsford, and I think we get a lot more bang for our buck here. And I will echo the acknowledgements to the town manager and your staff, as well as staff from the Treasure Collectors Department, especially Pam McKenzie, as well as Karen Rashes, and Mike Morris and Lorraine Herman, thank you very much for your years of service. Mike, I got to work with you quite a bit during my days on the Finance Committee, and you are a very knowledgeable, and I have a great deal of respect for what you've brought to this town, so you will be missed, it is going to be very difficult for this town to replace you, I know we got six more months out of you, or five, you're probably counting, but thank you very much, and I look forward to the kickoff to Finance Committee season tomorrow.
Chairman, thank you. I'd like to echo what all my other colleagues on, on the board have said, especially, it's encouraging to see so many members of the School Committee here, and Dr. Brand, and Mr. Rogério. I'm very happy that the town has, again, approached a very conservative approach, but also investing in our little children in town. It's very important to me and everyone on this board, so I'm very glad that the town allows us to do that every year, and it's been that way since I've been in town. I do have a couple of questions, Jeff. I'm super psyched that we, I see that we're investing in police and fire, but I attended a couple of meetings about the fire department, and we've got a million dollars of overtime, which is very concerning, and the Finance Committee had some issues, and there was recommendations, I believe the Finance Committee and the Selectmen thought there was going to be eight new firefighters. Is it the conservative approach, or is it something that you're going to fix again in 2021, or are we going to add, or what's, what's, what's that nature? What's the plan there?
Certainly, there were discussions at the Finance Committee about the prospect of eight additional firefighters, and I know the chief, Fire Chief McMahon felt pretty strongly about that. I, I don't necessarily disagree, but, you know, I think we have to be able to do these things in a sustained manner, and to put that number of people in place all in one fiscal year, I think is, is going to be a problem, so I'm suggesting that there may be additional increases to come, but I, I think for this fiscal year, four is what we can manage.
That, that makes sense, Jeff, and I agree, I think I agree with you, I'd like to look at it a little further, but it's, it's not going to help the million-dollar overtime budget that we're going to have, the four offices, if, for all intents and purposes, they're not going to get hired in 2019 or 2020 possibly, because of, it took these current firefighters that we had, just graduated Friday as firefighters, and that was, I think, about an eight-month process, so that's, that's the concern I have.
And that's, that's one of the challenges that we deal with, being a civil service community, whether it's a police or fire, and on the police side, it's even more challenging because of the timeline, it can take anywhere from eighteen to twenty-four months in some cases to get new personnel on board, it's just, you know, civil service, there's a process that we have to go through, there's training requirements and so on, so as I indicated in my presentation, this is, these additions are not going to solve this overtime problem immediately. It's, it's a consequence of staffing, as well as, you know, the challenges that we've experienced recently with the number of people who have been out on long-term absence. Hopefully, we can address some of that, I, I know on the fire side, we're down to three absences at the moment, but we seem to be running between four and six, so we'll continue to address that.
Thank you, and I, I think it's a great approach, I, I just wish there was a way we could get rid of that million-dollar budget, that million-dollar budget line item, if you know what I mean. And I know it's not possible, but it's, I'm glad we're looking at it and approaching it, and thinking about it, and hopefully getting it done sooner rather than later. I also want to echo what Mr. Bendel said about the unacceptable streets, we need to, we need to try to stay on top of that subject and keep moving forward, so, thank you, thank you, everyone.
Thank you. And once again, just to echo some of my colleagues' comments, thank you for continuing to invest in education, our police and fire, veterans and elderly service, all important to the community, for sure. Okay, we're going to, is that it for comments at this time? All right, we're going to move on to communications, which there are none, because tonight is basically the budget presentation, the town manager, to the community. Next is public comments, and then if anybody has any public comments, we're going to keep it within a five-minute limit. If you have questions during your public comments, we're not going to answer those questions, those questions will be posted to the board, they'll, the board members will be able to respond to them if they cho, choose to under new business. So as not to interrupt your public comment, because that's what it is, it's not a question and answer process, it's, it's for you to make a public statement. If a question is involved in that public statement, we will jot it down, and, and the board members can answer it if they choose to. Okay. Yes? Just name an address for the record.
I have a question in regards to the heating system that was going to go into the library. Did you guys look at geothermal systems, because that is just a heat pump with water, so it's more cost-effective over time, so that's all I have.
No, yes, Mr.
Yes, Kevin McDonald?
A few comments. Concerning the fire department and all the overtime, one of the things that I suggested is that we subcontract the ambulance service, and we don't have any paramedics, we only have emergency medical technicians, and the difference between the two is that a paramedic can administer lifesaving medication, so what we have to do now is we actually have to subcontract the ambulance service out to basically a real ambulance. And so, I would like the board to take a look at subcontracting the ambulance service out, because when you hire people, the town is responsible for employee health benefits, and before the stop-loss insurance kicks in, I believe the deductible, now, Mr. Dull, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it was, it was once fifty thousand dollars deductible, now it's at least a hundred thousand dollars, so before, before the town collects a penny from stop-loss insurance, eight claim, per claim, has to go over a hundred thousand dollars. So you hire four people, and you put all of their families on the town's insurance, not only are we paying for salaries, but we're responsible for employee health benefits. In addition to that, we're paying for stop-loss insurance, which doesn't kick in, because we basically gave them a Christmas present all year, all year round, to get all this money from the town and not have to pay, pay out until a claim goes over a hundred thousand dollars. The other thing I wanted to mention is, are, what, could you just give me the amount of the free cash that the town has now, Mr. Hall? Is that possible?
It was mentioned twenty-three million.
Twenty-three million, okay. I'd like this, at this time, I'd like to put in a public record request, and I'd like to have the town identify every article and every expenditure where that free cash was generated from, because it's my understanding that the free cash is generated as a result of overbudgeting. We budget, we expend money, and then anything that's left over goes into free cash. So I remember when Mr. Kyra was a manager, he was all excited because the free cash was three million dollars. Now, in that short a time, it's gone up to twenty-three million dollars, and if you have- And if you haven't noticed, there's a lot of people that are, that are moving out of town. And I just don't think that that's honest. I think the town was incorporated as a nonprofit entity, and now what, what's basically happening is they're double dipping. They're basically hammering people in taxes. And I checked out a neighboring community the other day, the town, the city of Woburn, and their residential tax rate is $9 per thousand. Their industrial tax rate and their commercial is $23 per thousand. And, you know, we're $13 and change per thousand, and I think it's $32 per thousand for industrial. And people are wondering why we see industrial buildings vacant. So please, please take a note that I'd like that public record request for an identification of all the free cash, where it was generated from, the articles, expenditures, requests, whatever it takes, Mr. Hall. Thank you.
Just as a point of clarification, public records requests are for documents that exist. We aren't, public records requests are, there is no one document that identifies how the free cash was generated, so it's not a research project that, public records requests are not intended as a research project. They're intended to retrieve documents that exist for public review.
There's got to be documents that exist showing where that money came from, Mr. Hall. I mean, for example, we just hired a school superintendent, paying him some big bucks, and I believe the school department budget has gone up millions of dollars just in one, one fiscal year. Like, what was it, was it 4%?
Thank you, Mr. Hall.
It just seems like the board members should represent the town in such a way where you dig in and say, why is this school budget going up this much? Let's identify these numbers.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comments? Yes.
Suzanne Sullivan, 61st Street. I'm here tonight, I was wondering, last meeting, there were a lot of questions that were posed to the board, and I'm wondering if there's any questions, answers to those questions? Like, for instance, whether or not the Board of Selectmen is going to entertain special counsel for 362 Middlesex and a detox? Do you want an answer, or?
We'll entertain the answers under new business.
I went to the end of public comments last.
I don't recall that being asked, but we'll talk under new business. We'll answer the questions if we so desire.
It was asked, it was some other point of the contention.
You have any other comments?
I do have several other comments. I, I just want to remind this board that you take an oath to uphold the bylaws of the town, and the bylaws of the town could potentially be violated at the ZBA meeting, especially if there is a vote for an accommodation. I also think that the state should get involved, because there's an effort right now to override a vote of the ZBA for a special permit, which is a denial. And the process that's being brought forward, we think is not really a legal process to override that special permit, and so far, the council has not concurred with that, and we don't feel as though we've had a fair analysis of it. And these are not only state bylaws, but these are Massachusetts general law laws. So in other words, if that's overridden, essentially what you're saying, and what this town will be saying, is that any medical facility can come forward, almost every medical facility has disabled people that go there, and that special permit of a medical facility can be overridden with this process. We've asked a case law, where that's the case, we haven't been given it. We've done our own research, and our own research has indicated that that cannot happen. We've contacted the state, the state has concurred with us. We want this board to do their job. It's your job to uphold the bylaws of this town. We expect nothing less from this board. Right now, our town is being hustled, and don't turn the other way. You put your hand up and take an oath to uphold the bylaws of the town. Nothing else. Not a development, the bylaws, and that's what we expect you to do. And I want an answer whether or not this board's going to do it. The people in this audience want an answer. The people sitting at home, the over 300 people that went to all those meetings, we want an answer from you. Don't blow me off again. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anybody else? Yes.
Chairman, I just want to find out, did you file your ethics paperwork that you said you were going to file?
I have not done so yet.
Okay.
Why is that? Why haven't you? Is there a timeline that you have to do that, or is there, you're going to wait till it's over?
Can you, we're going to go with his comments first.
I think the next thing I have, just a comment. Back in June, we sat here through replacement of a town council who had been with us for 15 years, who's done, for all intents and purposes, a decent job for us. And I always wondered why. We never got an answer, and I think I even asked you why. I think Sue asked you why. Why are we getting rid of him? I made the public records request, and that's been no secret, we've talked about it, and now a third determination was issued today. I have to wonder, is there something in these emails that has to do with the change of town council? I'm not asking you for an answer, because I don't think you're going to give me one, but it's certainly something that makes us wonder. We're, we're spoken to by Mr. Hall, and we're talking about civility. Where's the civility of the people? The documents that we're requesting here are our documents, and you're doing everything that you can not to give it to us. I've got three notices of determination from the Secretary of State's office that you guys aren't following the rules. How many thousands of dollars now in, in retainer have you guys spent having KP Law write form letters to me? I'm going to tell you something, they don't impress me. I'm still going to go forward. Those are our documents. And to have another one issued this morning, two weeks ago, you said you were going to look into it. Is this how you look into things? You hide further? Regardless of whether or not there's something there, let's put some sunshine on it. If there's nothing there, then great. But keeping, keeping on spending the money the way you're doing, just trying to hide these things, it's telling us a lot, guys. That's it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Public?
Yeah, Adam Hackten, Pine Wood. Just to piggyback on what Rob said, when do you plan on filing for the Ethics Committee to determine whether or not there's a conflict?
As soon as possible.
What does that mean?
Hopefully this week. I've been a little bit busy with work and other commitments that I have.
Right, but you've taken an oath here, too, so.
Yep.
That shouldn't supersede that, right?
I appreciate it. Yeah, I'm going to be filing.
And you're up for reelection, correct?
I am, yes, sir.
Okay. Want to make sure everybody heard that. Okay. Nothing else?
Thank you. Anyone else for public comments before we go back to, yes, Mr. McDonald?
Yes, the previous meeting, I made the suggestion that the town should reach out to the, to the proponent that wants to develop the site for a detox center. And I made the suggestion that you guys should reach out to him to have some type of friendly development there, a development that would be more fitting for the neighborhood. I asked her to reach out to the people at town and ask for suggestions. My suggestion happened to be that the town do everything that they can to make life easy for this guy, to get him a sewer line and possibly build a train station with underground parking, senior housing, and veteran housing, with, with maybe an eatery, so people that are going to the train and living in that area could have a place to eat and be out of the weather. And you directed Mr. Hall to reach out to the proponent, and I just want to know what the status is if Mr. Hall actually was able to contract, contact Mr. Neeland.
I probably could answer for Mr. Hall. Over the last three days, he probably hasn't with the budget process, but you can certainly.
I have not reached out to him yet. It's on my list.
Does anyone else wish to speak on the public comments? Okay. New business? Any of the colleagues wish to address?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to piggyback what Suzanne Sullivan asked. I agree with every single word you said, Suzanne. We were here last week in town councils, and sitting right in front of Kelly, I believe, and they were going to look into it. I hope to think, Jeff, that we're going to get these answers to these questions, and I thought we were going to get those answers to this meeting. So I hope that's going to be the case for the next meeting, that we get that answer. I hear what Mr. Fassul is saying, so I would hope to think that whatever he can request by law, and if it sounds like, what is it, the Secretary of State's office saying that we have to give information? If that's the case, I hope that we are doing it, and if we're not, let's get it. Let's do our jobs. Let's do our jobs right. I mean, that's what we are. You know, we're elected by these residents. These seats are just temporary seats that we possess until the next election. So I just would hope to think that we're doing everything possible to make sure that everyone talks about transparency. Let's just do what we're supposed to do. Get it done. Plain and simple. Thank you.
Yeah, in regards to town council, I believe Mr. Rich said that he would be defending the decision of the zoning board of appeals, which was to deny the permit. So that, I think, was one of the comments that he made, because it was directed towards him, what would he be doing on behalf of the town? And that's what I thought. I'd have to refresh my memory on that.
That's true. Is that last time we couldn't speak, because public comments were over?
And then the, and as regards to public records documents, we'll certainly have been looking into that, and I would instruct the town manager to make sure that all the public records that are available to be released, that they be released.
Yeah, there's no question that there have been oversights here recently in terms of emails. You know, there's one situation in particular in which the town clerk had requested information from the building department. She obviously is not intimately familiar with everything that goes on in the building department, was provided with information that she thought was the totality of the information, and it later became apparent, and I, I don't believe that there was any intent to hide anything, but for whatever reason, there were emails that were not presented to her that ultimately were upon further review. With regard to other emails, town council has made a determination as to what emails are attorney-client privileged, and I recognize that some people may find that offensive, but certainly there are certain communications between the town and its attorney that are not presently available as public records.
Then there was the, Mr. Grashell had a question about a heating system in the schools for looking at a geothermal rather than what it is. I don't know.
We, I don't know that we have looked at that. I can talk with our public buildings superintendent, but.
Was that what you gave, both the heat and the air conditioning, out of the same system?
I can pose a question, sure.
Sure. And then I think there was a question on ambulance service and paramedics, and I know that we have always grappled with bringing in paramedics as opposed to EMTs, and with having paramedics, we could do the direct billing rather than having a private company do that and bring in the, the revenue in that regard, but we haven't really moved forward on a paramedic look, because that brings in increased expense for salary, and so we try to weigh the pros and cons on whether that's a good thing or not.
Well, yeah, I think the question that seemed to me was posed, that we simply subcontract, not only subcontract advanced life support, ALS, but also subcontract BLS, which, you know, I think there is some challenges with that, certainly in terms of collective bargaining. That's a major change in the terms and conditions of employment for existing personnel. I'm, I'm not sure, quite honestly, how effective that would be, but, you know, it's certainly something that the town, I think, has felt very comfortable with the people that respond to their situations, being employees of the town.
Okay. Anybody else on any new business? Yes, Mr. Bendel?
Well, just, I know that it's going to come up under important dates, but I want to make mention of the wonderful dedication celebration that will be taking place this weekend, Sunday, at the high school for, in honor of our former superintendent, Joanne Benton. And I know that our friends on the school committee and others have spent a lot of time planning this wonderful event, and I hope everybody will come out to this great community dedication on Sunday at 2:00 p.m. Thank you.
Mr. McCoy, do you have anything on a new business?
I just wanted to piggyback with Suzanne Sullivan and Mr. Fassul. I made my position clear relative to any information. I've got nothing else.
Please, please, Ms. Sullivan, you don't need to.
I've got nothing else under new business. I've got nothing else.
Yell out. No, I don't think you need to yell out right now. It's, it's the board's, it's a board's meeting. This is a board's meeting, and we're listening to the citizens. This is not, this is, right now, we're having a board meeting, we're going to. No, I'm not speaking for the whole board. The whole board can speak for themselves. Okay, that's, that's it. We're under new business right now. Thank you for your comments. We appreciate it.
So you didn't answer the question?
Mr. McCoy.
Yeah. The bottom line is, I've got nothing else under new business. That was my only concern. To reiterate what Ms. Sullivan said, Mr. Fassul, town council was sitting right there, and he said that he would defend a case if he's asked to defend a case. And what other information he's supposed to seek, he said he was looking at. That's what I heard, so. All right, thank you.
Mr. Reed? New business? Still out?
Wow.
On to important dates.
February 5th is the Finance Committee meeting, Town Hall, Room 9. Budgetary overview, revenue, general government. February 6th is the development of strategic plan for Wilmington Public Schools Community Meeting, Wilmington High School, 6:30 p.m. February 7th is the Finance Committee meeting, Town Hall, Room 9, 7:00 p.m. Planning, Conservation, Building Inspector, Board of Appeals, and Recreation Department. February 9th, development of strategic plan for Wilmington Public Schools Community Meeting, Wilmington High School, 9:00 a.m. February 9th, Congressman Seth Moulton, Town Hall Auditorium, 1:00 p.m. And February 10th, dedication of the Joanne Benton Auditorium, 2:00 p.m., Wilmington High School. Just a reminder that May 5th is the start of the plastic bag ban in Wilmington.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything? Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. McCoy, anyone on Mr. Bendel? Any discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, and good night.